Welcome to the witness. Senator, please read the communication that was sent to the witness. Senator Delong, Senator Quentin Duncan. Senator Delong, Senator Quentin Duncan.
Read out, May fifteen twenty twenty five. Honorable Counselor Cooper W. Cora, Minister of Labor, Nigeria. Dear Mr. Minister, I present my compliments and by directive of the Senate in section. I prize you that great concerns have been raised again by members of the Senate as it relates to the eight thousand foreign nationals who are in possession of work permits in Liberia and their related job categories thereby denying Liberians citizens of proper work. In view thereof, this body will have made to set you to appear before the Senate as a committer of the rule on Tuesday, May twenty 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 five at this hour in the Senate chamber to show reason or reasons why foreign nationals are given such huge work permits in living Liberia's art while capable of carrying those tasks assigned to some foreign nationals. It is important to note that your appearance in subsequent discussion on matters of concern will afford members of the Senate an opportunity in making decision from an informed position. Please be further informed that failure to appear will constitute a gross affront to the Senate which shall be punished by a reasonable sanction deemed by the Senate. Please accept the renewed assurances of my highest consideration and extreme care regards. Sincerely, the Secretary of the Senate. Madam President, Portemper and Presiding Officer, distinguished members of the Senate, the reading of the last communication sent to the Minister of Labor.
Mr. Witness, that was a communication from the Senate to you. Can you respond to that? Yeah. Yeah.
Well, uh, Madame, good times of members of the of this God's body, members of the Senate. Let me say that I have the the promise there are some myths misunderstanding. Perhaps it's better for to make it clear today because we appeared before the Senate before and we did inform the Senate that we process a number of work permits. And in responding, in giving information.
Senator Delong, please take a seat.
In giving information to the Senate to say that last year, the twenty twenty four, we issue work permit up to in the neighborhood like around ten thousand and about eight thousand of that were regular work permit. And the total we've collected largely was around nine plus million dollars for work permit we issue. But the the letter is saying eight thou- the eight thousand are not necessarily regular or regular work permit. And I I probably need to keep the breakdown of that of that eight thousand. That eight thousand regular work permit, this is the breakdown. And 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 that the breakdown was was supported the breakdown with all of the, for example, gratis white permit, regular red permit, we made copy for the Senate. I think we made sufficient copy and they were distributed among members of the Senate. Take for example, we said non-African aliens mean the white guys, the white people.
Madame Portem, order. Madame Portem, order.
Yes, Senator.
Thank you. Madame Portem, distinguished colleagues, we want to get the minister on course so that we be clear on what we're doing. The minister submitted this Senate a listing of people he gave him work permit to. And but he lacked the category, the job description, the job category. It is that job description category we have asked this minister on official communication more than part time to submit. So he get kind of say he has submitted that to the Senate. He know what the Senate wants. So we see the job description, the category to determine whether it's a driver, what is a capital, what is a plumber, then we know for clear that we need to correct them because that is what is in violation of the law that we want to correct. That's submit.
Uh, Mr. Minister, you've worked with this committee for several months. I think the report was presented on the Senate floor. Uh, and to complete that report, there has been one request by the Senate to give that list of foreigners that you give work permit to with the categories. I think we send several communications and we've asked you to appear with that list. I don't know whether the list was sent, Senator, the Senate, didn't you request because specific request for the list?
Uh, uh, Madame Portem, if you.
Uh, Mr. Minister, Senator, Senator, the Senate.
Madam Presiding Officer, I asked him and he told me that he had previously submitted list. He said to plenary, that's what he told me, see. He said during his appearance, he said during his appearance.
How how should it, who 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 submits, which office was it some bigger through it to come to Senator, the Senate?
He said during his appearance before the Senate.
Uh, Senator, look, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Madame. Madame Portem, thank you. Senator Delong appropriately raised the issue and you further emphasize. When the minister appear here the last time, uh, it was mandated to submit the list in categories in terms of the issuance of work permit. After that, I follow up with the chairman of the committee. By that time, he had an unfortunate situation where somebody had his daughter, somebody died for him. So he wasn't able to submit the report. So the chairman was to follow up to ensure that that list was submitted. But since then, it hasn't been done. It was not done until we went for break. The key issue here is that we want to be in a position to violate uh, the eight thousand jobs in the different categories. Until we can have that, uh, it it is going to be difficult to make progress.
Uh, Madame.
And that's the only reason why the minister is here today. The only reason why the minister is here today was to present the list of the categories. Can you, can you respond to that, Mr. Minister?
Yeah, Madame Portem, if you if you allow me to complete my statement that will address the issue of the category that that the senator is talking about.
Do you have the list?
With our.
Do you have that list?
We've already submitted a list. We met over it, we took over a system, this is.
No, no, Mr. Minister, the only reason why you are here today is to present to the Senate the list of eight thousand work permits that were given to foreigners with the categories of what was that submitted to the Senate? Do you have it today?
Madame Portem, we did submit, we submitted listing of all of the work permit we issue gratis, regular.
With categories, with categories.
They are contained in the in the document that was submitted to the Senate. But I can go further to the story to explain that the eight thousand we mentioned.
Mr. Minister, the document that you have had the list with the categories, the document before you.
The system that we have replaced that we took over does not say.
Mr. Chair, Chair of the Labor Committee, can you respond to that? Have you received the list of the eight thousand work permits with categories?
Uh, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say. You got to let me explain.
The question was this year, I'm late here on labor. Oh, thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Portem, we got a list. Uh, when I spoke with the minister, the list that was submitted, that all of what we see copied still. That list does not define or identify category. Category meaning it does not say whether the person is a capital or is a mechanic or electrician. It does not say that. And the minister is saying that the system that provides the work permit does not go down to define category. That's why he says. So this is where the box start do all doing throughout this whole discussion, throughout this whole discussion. The machine does not identify whether this person is a mechanic according to the minister. The machine that is providing work permit, the the minister is before you. That's the information that I got and that's the information you have before you. Okay, so, uh, unless you have, he has additional information to provide, then we look forward to hearing from him.
Senator, what information?
So the the information here, um, uh, on a project, distinguished senator, is that the there is a regulation twenty nineteen, labor regulation, and in that regulation, they state categories to issue permit.
Hit up now, use the microphone.
It has the twenty nineteen regulation, it has category there to issue permit. It even specify those who have exemption for permits, for labor permit. Good. Now with that regulation, it tells you that when you are implementing a system, the system is activated by regulation. So there is no way that that system that we are talking about, that we have a digital system that you will not capture because once you capture the people making the system, you run a query. You just run a query. So I think the minister should go on the query and get all the information. Thank you.
Mr. Minister, can I respond to that?
Okay, like I was saying, Madame Portem, we met a system, the system, the categorization of work permit in the system is that non-African, we identify them by by the white permit we issue. There are non-Equas African aliens, we also identify them. Aliens that are or Equas aliens are also identified by the system. And this is a system that was built, that we met, we have not changed the system. And the category here, based on our report, that's what we sent you. And we try to continue to say that, we talk about that eight thousand you talked about, the eight thousand, six thousand of. Of of that number, that non-African alien, those are, you see, ordinary white people, that non-Equas aliens, which are other African country, would also give the number. Okay, for example, the non-African alien, the six thousand nine hundred eighty, that constitute that sixty nine percent. Then that non-Equas alien Africa, that that was two thousand six hundred ninety nine, that constitute twenty seven percent. These categories are are tied into the L R A.
Mr. Minister, all of Senator Delong.
Okay.
Madame Portem, every time we pass concession here, it is part of our through our knowledge that we will adopt our people. This legislature deliberately passed a decent work act and authorized the Minister of Labor to issue regulations or what we call employment permit, known as work permit, where deliberately intent to preserve a job for some Liberians, for Liberians. Then what the minister is doing here is he 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 reaching to the point where he risking Article forty four content because he want to impede or obstruct our function by a deliberate refusal to comply with plenary or 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 mandate. There is no system that only carry your name, your age, your nationality, but immediately you apply for, that system be there, oh, something wrong. What that category is deliberately other the system, it tells you something is wrong because you getting work permit for drivers, the system must carry. You getting work permit for capitals, the system must carry. We will not pay for school thing, no go to vocational school. The government will not fund vocational institution. Our people get vocational skills, they got the skills, marketable for job market. When we create job opportunity, then we get work permit to non-Liberians for the same job for which we created because the government wants one thousand US dollar per work permit. Some of the work, the job, they carry out to non-Liberians that Liberians are qualified available to have, paying more than two, three thousand Arab a month. The minister, my honor to the minister, Madame Portem, and distinguished colleagues, is that for four months, this minister has been begging this issue. Eight thousand work permits to non-Liberians for jobs that the minister can't provide the category description of is troubling, something is wrong. The minister is risking contempt and will beg this plenary to hold a minister in contempt or they submit that list. We must know who he giving these jobs to because in keeping with my communication that I wrote, I quote that all of the law, regulation, regulation, uh, 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 chapter seven, section seven, chapter forty five, section forty five point nine, respectively of the decent work act, authorized the Minister of Labor to issue regulations for the issuing of work permit to aliens, foreigners, and or non-Liberians. All of this authority, the Ministry of Labor have issued a the revised regulation number seventeen twenty twenty nine, right, all the code by my colleague, Francis Doppo, setting the condition. You have an interesting thing I want to note here. Section three of the regulation, no permit shall be issued to a non-African alien to work in the informal sector, that's a driver, store boy, all of them, the informal sector. Going for his store, you will see store boy, going, going, go see for a a duty truck and thing, you will see drivers and all of them. Uh, additionally, no permit shall be issued to any alien, whether non-African or not, to engage in any of the businesses set aside by law exclusively for Liberians. This is a liberalization act that we pass as a legislative for the executive to go implement and enforce for the good of our people in our country. The executive is violating this general law and we appear that we do not serve our people. We only here for ourselves. The emphasis, moreover, section six of the twenty nineteen resolution, a regulation carries that except, as otherwise provided by law, an employer who seeks to employ must first convince the Ministry of Labor that he or she cannot find a suitable Liberian for any existing vacancy by showing proof of publication of information regarding such vacancy for at least one month. In 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 uh, in at least two local newspapers and on two local radio stations as well as on Liberian website. Additionally, in closing, such employer shall obtain a certificate from the Ministry of Labor as proof that he has, he or she have found more Liberians qualified or suitable for the job. And until such proof is shown, the Minister of Labor, consistent with chapter five of the of the of the decent work act, shall issue no work permit to an alien. If the alien has residential permit. Where is the category of the eight thousand work permit that the Minister of Labor have issued that we can find not qualified suitable and available Liberians to have?
So thank you, Mr. Senator. So, uh, Mr. Minister, are you saying that we issue work permit to aliens without knowing what job that they want to do? Do we issue work permit without knowing what job that they want to do?
Work permit, Madame Madame Portem, work permit that we issue would be issued based upon job classification. Job classification, when we issue bill for those work permit, the bill goes to the L R A. This system we have right now is actually the punching in of those information are done by L R A. L R A collected the money, they.
So we are issuing work permit not knowing what job they want to do? Is a blank check?
The classification that L R A, we have would be non, non-African alien, non-African, uh, uh, Equa members, they, uh, uh.
Senator, Senator.
Are there with with L R A, it's not the one that come by to us.
That were quoted, all the laws that were just quoted are being violated.
It's not violated, Madame Madame Portem.
What, but if we issue, Senator Jim.
I don't think we waste our time. I think, uh, the the submission of the minister to that mission is a record of positions of aliens employed. That is sad, case that is sad because the first, the first thing the military is supposed to do, the person that is required, that law requires, is that a position is declared, begin, that they say position position must be declared, be a position before the military look out there or before somebody applies. So what is a position? Why the minister tell us? That for that come to the military as an African alien, non-African aliens and what have you, and those are the category, no, that cannot be, then that that is, that the military is violation of the federal law that that the military is is talking about. It's a position that must be taken, is that position that the military to do to make a determination whether in this country we have the particular skill set, meaning whether there's a Liberian that is capable, qualified to occupy that position. If not, before the military can look out there, advertise the position, advertise the position. Not the as the advertising, but the position. So you can come back to us and say, L R A does, yeah, L R A is, yeah, that does, yeah, L R A this day. We must price that will be fresh before even the payment is made at the L R A. You must make a determination by virtue of the of information provided that a position, a position is taken, a position is taken. So you must, you must have a catalog of the position and a requirement to fill the position. Thank you.
Portem. Portem. Portem.
Senator Coca, okay, let me get the information for Senator Doco. Yeah, I thought to go to the place, Senator Coca, Senator Delong, please approach the beside.
Yeah, so, uh, Madame Portem, distinguished senator, I think we can just be as straight to the point. At chair of telecommunication, we always concern, at chair of telecommunication, we always concern about the services, the online services of all of the institutions. I think we say that in our opening statement here that we will do follow on to see how the services are performing. For example, the inner out, they give off ID card and the barcode is not functional. Okay, those are issue local. So we mean look at the website of the the Ministry of Labor. The information is requested by the Ministry of Labor on their website. They ask for all the information, the job description, everything, and you input that into the system online, they have an online platform. So what can the minister go and looking at the website? Yeah, so I think we got to look at that, Mr. Minister, go by, tell your people. It's on your website, you ask for the information online to process. I'm having it here, there's not another country, it's Ministry of Labor, Liberia, on the website. So please check it out, thank you.
Senator Coca.
Are we forming a committee of the whole, Madame Portem?
Madame Portem, colleagues, let me say thank you once again for affording me this opportunity. Now, at times, to approach an issue, we need to be meticulous. What Senator Delong is saying by, that my sense true in it, but perhaps the way in which a better approach. On our article twenty one C of the Liberian Constitution, the verse that anybody who is accused of a crime presume innocent until proving otherwise and also might be confronted with a charge. Now we standing, this Senate is a quasi judicial institution. Why it is so that that happened? At least, we expect one of our colleagues that is in Marzi, where they come about pledge this information to give us some empirical facts. For example, job, uh, okay, if 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 that are there, if that are then, if that is the case, Madame Presari, they are said to be corrected, however, however.
That's all, all of, all of.
The institution here is.
Honor, who call honor, Senator Jim.
About crime or doing anything, I would say that the actual information that was question of the legislation to be provided, that's all. Thank you.
Senator, they don't say you risk contempt if if you violate those laws. Yeah, risk contempt. So when I, that's not, that's not an issue.
Okay, so, uh, I think I will advise this other body to give some consideration in terms of giving time with the due they provided to the minister that this identical information that is being requested by the Senate, if it has not been provided, they should constitute a force and a last.
No, uh, Senator, uh, Senator, you just, you just got it. This is a situation that has been on this floor for over, over four months.
Suggestion is subject to acceptance or rejection.
No, but we we just want to inform you on where we are. This has been on the floor for over four months. Our committee, this committee has reported over three times, we've had a debate and we need this final information for the Senate to make decision. So, uh, we can provide you with those information so you follow. So when I you now inform properly about this debate.
Uh, now you listen to church.
So more, more.
Okay, but are you?
Uh, Senator Taylor.
The minister, okay, does the ministry have a share in this collection that is? Can you use a microphone? I'm asking, the money collector for the white permit, the ministry have a share?
Uh, Majesty, we have issued and we've had all of these debates and the reports have come on the floor. The issue now is to get the list of the one thousand aliens who who were given work permit, we want to see the categories to see why they were given the work permit as per category. If the categories are categories that Liberians should occupy, then we insist that Liberians take the job. So that is the focus of this debate.
I agree, the reason why I'm asking the question, if I'm really to the same direction.
Yeah.
The Ministry of Labor may want to give more job permit because they have a share. And we are being, we are being accused because we are not creating jobs for our people. Because I can understand why the minister will not be able to, in four months' time, give off the category of jobs. Because we have requested over what I was in two or three years. And we requested that, we wanted the category of jobs, the information he gave off. Who is he giving job to? Because there are jobs, we believe, more especially for some of us that come from a county that has concession, we pay a. We've been accused that we are giving jobs to non Libyans, that Libyans didn't do. So they are scared and worried. But I believe, the reason why, look, the fill out information, give up the information to one of them. But I believe, because maybe no category of jobs that are given to non Libyans, if you give it to the Libyans, you will not get more money. So, I mean, to run the ministry or whatever the case is. But I strongly believe that we need to give up the information, because we need it. We need it. Thank you, Proten.
I think the fact, if the minister is saying that they are providing work permit with all categories. There is a violation of all of the laws that were stated. The Senate should insist that this minister go back and bring us that list on Thursday with the categories. But before that, you have to tell us the procedures. How does that work? How, how, how do you lead to giving work permit? Do you just have people coming to the ministry and you give them a blank check? There has to be a procedure, there has to be forms, there has to be positions for which work permits are given. So it's, it's confusing if you just say that work permits are given without you knowing the category. And all of the rules are there, so it's even more concerning for you to say that. Can you just tell us the procedure that's followed before work permits are given?
Thank you, Madame Proten. To issue work permit, you will have to make an application to the ministry. That, uh, I want, you find must have a resident permit for immigration. And then you come and say, I'm an engineer, I want to work with, say, Meta City. Then, then, then we will issue, we'll okay that, 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 that request, it goes to the Asian registration. They issue the bill and they go to L R A to make a payment. L R A will put the, 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 uh, the, the application in a different category. Other non African, African or, or gratis, that one is done. But, but let me explain, let me, let me go, let me go further to say that. The reason I said this is a category we met, was that this is a system that was in place two, about a year, or over two years before we took over. And I'm sure another time Senator DeLonge was, Senator, yes.
So, so Mr. Minister, you have a manual, you have a manual process before you get to the system. That manual process is the form that states the position. Because you have to say you are an engineer, you are an accountant. So from that manual report, you can give us what we need. You don't need to, so if that system, let me provide for that. The manual process, all of the forms that have been filled in provide, I'm Yomi Kanga Lawrence, I'm a nurse. And I want to work for a Salam Bita. That, that portion that says that I'm a nurse is what we need. Can we get the list of categories by going through that manual process?
It's possible, it's possible we can do that. The only reason we, we have been, uh, emphasizing on this report that we've been sending you, because this is automatic, it's better. But if we have to go through to say, look, every, every request that comes to us, we have to now do a manual recording of it. It will, it will be like, it will come from us directly. This one you can.
No, no, we are going back, Mr. Minister, what we are trying to do is, is job creation. We want to make sure that we find jobs for Libyans.
And we do that, we do that.
Okay, so we have to go back to where we came from to get the eight thousand positions. Yeah, you have to give us time. The automated system is not going to help us, the manual system will help us. We want you to commit to something and give us the time to go and put that report together and come back. And we will, we will, we will follow, uh, uh, what you suggest. Can we get a suggestion from you from that, because it's, it's there. Uh?
Ma- Madame Proten gave us two weeks to do that. Whenever we, well, even within the two weeks, we'll try to do as much as possible, I mean, we want to go by to the backlog of those records. To now do a manual recording and then, and then have a check or put in the computer to, to bring it.
Okay, we'll hold that two week request and hear from somebody, Senator Senator Jim.
Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, Senator, you speak after some.
Yeah, Proten, I mean, the information the minister has, that was in special division. Can you also get records from the continent, your employees?
Uh huh.
What are the categories you are employing there? For example.
Okay.
Uh, Company X, you have following people working with them. One is a geologist, one is a mining engineer, one is a driver, etc. Can we get a?
We can, we can get the one that write the tool, yes.
Then they can compare that with your data, they can send it off.
Yeah, that would be easier. We can get it from them directly, and we get them, we can submit them, we can come with them.
Also, very, they have verified that would be our good idea. That would be, that would be, that can help you. Yeah, I mean, that can help a little bit.
We do a, we do a strong communication to make sure they give us accurate information. We also try to compare that with what we have.
Thank you. That can help you.
Senator Quetan, Duncan.
Madame Proten, thank you. This, uh, has been brought to an understanding that the minister is asking us for two weeks. To return and give us the categories of eight thousand. Happy that we have come to that conclusion. However, I have a concern, and since the minister is here. It goes in line with that of the concern of Senator Darus DeLonge of Monsurado. Now into our country, there is no more employment with these various companies and concessions agreement that comes into enforcement. Everyone is now on contractual basis. And the reason for that is to be able to run away from the different benefits that Libyans supposed to be having. Retirement benefit, medical benefit, leave, annual leave at the end of the year. All of those things have been stripped away by these concessions that we bring here and these investors that are into our country. Sometimes I wonder if they are ready investors, they were investor, doesn't it apply to them? The Sanlo County, we have about over five logging companies situated there. There is no employment. Also, all, if you check a, a, a logging company, uh, 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 people that have, then they are brought in. You will check that in the log yard, maybe there are three persons there, with maybe two securities in the day, two securities in the night. So you have about eight Libyans employed in the entire logging company. I'm wondering, what is the purpose of us having these people in Liberia, where they cannot employ our people? After three months, according to your law, they can be employed. But for now, three months, they will sign six months contract, and then another six months, and then after no contract again. They will work continuously for two, three years on that three months contract you signed four years ago. So this is something I need you to read and look at, and when you come back, be able to tell us. Also, the so-called investment of these people that are coming here, they are not investing. They are exploiting. It is the exploitation of our resources. As we were discussing before, we, we called it all just for you to come in. We cannot barely face our roads. Because we don't have money, everything we rely on a few taxes that we generate. When we know that you're supposed to be telling us that those laws should not be cut. By a man who just bring two million dollars here and become twenty million dollars richer when he goes, by cutting our laws to put me on the ship. Then that Libyans do it ourselves. We can say that other people can get rich, then when a Libyan man want to get rich, everybody's fighting, holding him down. He is a senator, he not supposed to invest. He are represented, he not supposed to have money. Then when we leave this job, in the end, after two months, we have no money, and the very people there be laughing and saying, oh, he used to be. Look at him fighting for taxi. But then when this so-called investor come, in two years, they get twenty, thirty million, and they go back to the home. But we can't get it. So let the employment business come. If you can't employ, you're not capable of, of, of exploiting our resources. You can't employ, you don't want to pay the adequate benefits, the adequate benefits. Uh, 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 Madame Proten, arrest.
Senator Soukwe, five hours later, Doku. And then maybe we can close, um. Senator Soukwe, five hours later.
Thank you, Madame Proten. Uh, Mr. Minister, the idea around these conversations is not to chastise. It is simply to create jobs for our people when we have created laws. That can provide jobs for them based on category.
We're going here.
Alright, so, I'm saying the reason why we are speaking in this manner is not to chastise him, the minister. Is to create jobs for our people, since in fact we have created the enabling environment by creating these laws and set aside jobs for them. When you are offering work permit for them, for jobs that Libyans can do, based on the local content law. Then it's trouble some to us. On your online platform, you ask all of these questions. What is the category of job you're going to do? What is the classification? Where are you from, where, and all of these things? How is it possible that you are saying that the platform you inherited does not suggest these things? Please, we respect you just as you respect us, and there is a mutual respect amongst us. Please provide those information, because it has been long overdue, this chairman has been very understanding. Let's have these papers, and let's see what is there, what we can cancel, what we can maintain, and give a job to our people, because they need job too. The function of any government is to provide benefit for its people. Let's give our people the benefit they deserve. Thank you, Proten.
A double.
Uh, Madame Proten, this is Senator. Uh, I think there is something troubling, we will be very clear in. That if we be sharing forty percent of our revenue, the people revenue for general, their ID card process. Then it's better that we cancel that agreement. Because if the system can't query, you cannot get real-time information at this time. Then why would the minister inherit a process that cannot change for all by year and year? Because that's a matter of process. A simple Excel can query, there was a.
Or the system, you, if, if you are even charging forty percent on the penalty, or one thousand, for example, to give the ID card process. Don't get the one percent on, and bring the guy in to do the job for us. For example, because if you're accepted, you are just.
But the system is not strong, it doesn't even have a security, bringing the real time. Even the barcode, we expect that the barcode on the ID card, by just query of, 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 yes, on the, on the, you can say, I can lock the major position. So how are you inspector going to fee? We need to know that you're an ID card, because by why you're inspector going on the fee to be on the scan that card and no good job, obviously, to prove that in the truth. Only that you be there in the first place. That's what the system should do, that they can tap into of the system. But that will not, we are paying fees for young people in the V G college, going to school, to learn, for cash, no education. I earned a day when they, when they graduate, Chico would not give their job. Because you are giving Chico people penalty to do the same job we are giving their fault. Come on, we are talking about. There are any question against you. We also believe that you are there to pro, I mean, to promote the agenda of the government. And I generally say we provide job opportunity there. The ten thousand young people that are doing digital education, where are they, to have been given their job, only because we flawed our system. With people doing job, thank you. So there will be no use of choosing there, taking another ten thousand. Thank you.
Senator Bobo Saros, I think I will be the last. Any other Senator, Senator Bobo Saros, Mitch?
Thank you, Proten, thank you so much for your leadership. I sat down and I listened to all of the issues. And it's good that we are bringing this out with Madame, Mister, uh, Minister, like others said. It's not to dedicate you or disrespect your office, or feel that you not pay tribute to your Libyan people. But we are on our obligation to advocate for our people to get job, and where you say this key. And so we would just encourage you to take all of the notes, go back in the next two weeks. And bring those documentation so that we can lay this issue to rest. And so that if our people have an opportunity to work, they can work. But I, I, I have a concern, a security concern about these identification. Yesterday I had a confirmation hearing with the immigration. And we have realized that all of our activities are foreigners, all, I'm saying all. All of our duties. You're talking about work permit, you're talking about resident permit, you're talking about visa point rather, you're talking, everything is with foreigners, serious security risks. So the foreigner decide to strike, let me write, ooh, in terms of identification. My colleagues from River, you just said, your ID card that you are issuing. If we scan it, it does not give us any information. It's possible that person carrying an ID card could commit a crime, and the person would just vanish, we have no information. So I think in giving those, I think, I don't know who have those contracts. But we need to make sure that the backcodes are working so that we can be able to identify who are in possession of those particular card. Thank you, Madame Proten, for the opportunity.
Uh, thank you, distinguished colleagues. Uh, Mr. Minister, this is intended to help reform your ministry and to help the country provide job for our people. We take our work for two weeks, Secretary Senate, please do a communication today, two weeks is June third. Please do the communication for my approval before you send it out today. Uh, with that, we get a motion to. Back at a motion, back at a motion, to close it. You want to do the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Madame Proten, the same way colleagues. Having listened to the debates. And followed by the request of the Ministry of Labor. Requesting two weeks. Beginning today, to submit. The work permit document as mandated by plan area to include. The category of specification of jobs. Amor, that is required be granted, with the provision that the communication sent, to be sent to the minister. Was carried that a failure will constitute contempt. Will constitute contempt.
It was seconded by Quetan Duncan. Considered grant for contempt. Alright, uh, we are restating. Are you ready to vote?
Already.
Already, yes, Senator Soukwe. Bortcha.
I would like to appeal to the movement to add to the motion, to the fact that. When the minister is coming within the two weeks, you come a long ways, you got to.
That. That, that the communication carried that a failure will constitute.
That will be after.
And so then.
If it fails, yeah.
You're my best friend.
That will be after. The main say your name, the minister say your name. Alright, already, yes?
Already.
Senator Coca?
Uh, to the movement, I will be ready to vote if we can accept. The simple amendment. That we want, we want to have a clear understanding. And proper presentation of information to us. Having said that, I will be ready to vote. If you can add one week to the two week, two weeks, so that we get detailed information. What are the minister said? The minister said, I mean, you requested the minister to bring the document, but you, you added an addendum. That the institution, the companies should also provide information. So I'm asking that you please accept. More than. Three weeks. More than, I, I just related grand Brazil. More than. Move ahead.
So with those four amendments, I ready to vote. All in favor say yes. Against, do we leave the minister on a O?
Yes.
Okay. The minister will carry an O for two weeks? While we wait for him to bring his report. As long as we pass the motion, we can. You should have done that before the motion. Uh, so, a German?
So folks, this is Sponti TV Live and this is how we come to the end of today's section of the Liberian Senate. My name is Kenes Venna, following Sponti TV.